Here.
Garza.
I'm here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Pastor Daryl Peterson. Thank you.
Is it okay to drop this down?
Sure.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the privilege, the honor to come before you today. We thank you, Father God, that, that as we come together, the Father, we, we believe, and Father, we talk, and, and we ask, and Father, we thank you for your preciousness of your word. And Father, I just pray over the city. I pray, Father God, over each and every council member. And Father God, over the leadership, over, or, and Father, just, I just pray for each and every person individually. That, Father, we just lift them up, and Father, we just thank you that in the name of Jesus. That, Father, we, we claim healing in the bodies, Father, protection and prevention. Father, whatever it takes to make the prevention come into place, Father, we thank you for that today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the part of the meeting reserved for people in the audience who would like to address the council on a topic that is not on the agenda. Please, um, come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, uh, Mayor and Madam Council. I'll just take a couple minutes of your time. I think anybody who knows me knows, uh, how honored I am to have the opportunity to serve this community. And I'm very proud of the men and women that have answered that call to service with me. Uh, today kind of marks a kind of sad but really important day in the history of the Hutchinson Police Department. Today is the, uh, forty-eighth anniversary of the date that Officer Kenneth Kennedy was killed in the line of duty. Um, forty-eight years ago today, Officer Kennedy put on a uniform, kissed his family goodbye, walked out his front door to serve this community, and he never returned home. Um, every year, we recognize officers that have been killed in the line of duty and law enforcement Memorial Week. But, uh, those that paid the ultimate sacrifice, I just don't feel that that's enough. So, starting today, inside the agency, I've started a new annual, uh, tradition, uh, on today, September fifteenth, and then also July se- second, which is the date that recent Sherman Monroe, uh, died in the line of duty. Will be days dedicated specifically to those officers. And today will be filled up with, um, gestures that memorialize that and appreciate their, their call to service. Um, all the officers today are wearing the memorial band and in honor of, of Officer Kennedy. Every shift that comes on today before they go in service on the street will hold a moment of silence, uh, in his honor. And then we're also doing two all radio call, uh, broadcast, uh, today. So, it's a special day for us. So, I would just ask the community, if you happen to see, you know, one of your officers today, just maybe thank him, uh, because it's a, it's a rough day for them. And, you know, whether you support law enforcement or you don't support law enforcement, every one of those officers put on their uniform today and kiss their families goodbye and are serving and risking their life for, for you and every member of this community. So, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Thanks for your leadership on this topic, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Really working to, um, support your staff and the people who support us. Next item, please.
No, I think you have more.
We have another public call here.
Oh, okay, sorry. Dejada, I was just trying to skip right on by you.
Let's get going. That's okay. Good morning. I just wanted to briefly introduce some, a project that has been lovingly worked on by myself, um, Councilman Garza, and some really awesome young people here in Hutchinson. Uh, we are launching a pilot program for Hutchinson Youth Commission. Um, and we are anticipating some really great participation. And we're planning to start that, uh, commission group, um, this coming, uh, next week, actually. I'm going to introduce Keon Williams, who is going to speak about the purpose and why this, uh, commission is being brought together.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Uh, so hello, everybody. Again, my name is Keon Williams. I am a senior at Hutchinson High School. Uh, and like Dejada said, I'm here to speak about a proposed youth council. Um, I don't know how involved any of you are, but I know Councilmember Garza has been keeping in contact with us, and we really appreciate that. So, this council would be a nine-member commission made up of nine students in the city of Hutchinson who are working to communicate and advise the city council on issues facing our community's youth, as well as advocating on behalf of the youth to the community as a whole. Um, this council was born out of youth disenfranchisement. And this isn't, you know, an isolated issue in the city of Hutch. This is just something that the nation as a whole and probably across the world where youth are not listened to and are not taken seriously when they want to discuss issues facing our community. Um, they complain about any issues, you know, they're told to shut up and sit down and wait their turn because they don't have the life experience, and that's not necessarily true. Um, there are plenty of youth in our community that have wonderful ideas and that have solutions that, to issues that are affecting them. And that's something that we need to take a look at, and that's something that we need to prioritize. And that's exactly what this council would do. This youth council would make sure that these youth have a safe platform to air their concerns, to complain about issues facing them, as well as start discussing solutions. So that way, we can bring them to you, and hopefully, we can start, uh, improving our community and making our community a better and a safer place. Um, so I don't really know what our timeline is looking like for when we can get an official ordinance put together. But hopefully, we can continue this dialogue, and I'm hoping that, uh, you know, we can answer any questions or have a little discussion here today if you have anything to talk about.
Well, thank you, Keon. So, I'm, yeah, I do have a few questions, um, for you and Dejada. And I, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Councilmember Garza. I know he's not able to be here today, but this was his brainchild, so really excited to see it, um, coming together. And, um, interested in, in hearing the input that we have from young people in this community. Absolutely is going to take everybody of all ages to create the type of community that, uh, people want to live in and, um, feel represented in. So, can we talk a little bit about representation and who's going to make up that nine-member council?
Uh, right. So, I believe we have a proposed, uh, charter. It would be nine students enrolled at Hutchinson High School approved by, I believe, the city manager, um, through an application process. So, um, we can make sure that we have some dedicated people working to identify these issues.
Okay. Are there any, are there going to be any steps taken to, for instance, on, on the city council? You know, we're, we're from quadrants, so we represent different parts of the town. I don't know if there's any kind of, uh, representation opportunities there, um, different parts of the town or different, maybe, um, groups, different races, any, any kind of diversity or inclusion built in?
Yeah. Thank you for asking that question. Um, we thought long and hard about how could we, um, attract young folks that were engaged in the community already. Um, this being a pilot program, really so, sin, you know, centered ourselves on, uh, kids that were already engaged in civic discussion. Um, the application process has been, um, going through the Hutch High, um, advisor, Ms. Glenna Burden, and myself and Steve Garza have been reviewing those applicants to determine, um, how they can be a good fit for us. Um, we are hoping that as this first year goes through, um, that we are able to generate some really good interest. Um, and that anticipation is, is being seen. We're partnering with the NAACP Youth, and we have on the Human Relations Commission our youngest commissioner, um, who serves with us, and she's going to be a liaison just as well. So, we think right now we're, we're kind of doing it in a pilot way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we do anticipate that however this shapes out, uh, going forward, we'll be able to really reach out different areas. And because it's not a voting position, it's an appointed position, um, we haven't been able to get to all the different districts. I'll say that. Um, but that would be a great, a, a great future for the commission or, you know, going forward.
Okay.
I think it'll, it'll, it's kind of exciting to at least get folks right now that are interested and engaged.
Oh, for sure. And I definitely appreciate the ability to experiment until we come to, um, you know, what this will look like fully formed. But, great work and excited to see it up and going. Are there other questions from the council?
Hi, this is Steve Garza here. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Steve. There's like an enormous picture of your head. It's like double the size of a regular head. So, your presence is known. Okay, now I can't hear you. It's, the volume's really low now.
Now, he went from being loud to nonexistent almost.
Can you, can you speak now?
The joys of technology.
Right there.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yep.
I just cranked up the volume.
All right. Okay.
I think it's on his end.
Yeah. Hey, Steve. Can you put your mouth right up?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, yes, I'm, I've been having this dream for years when I was not a city council member that we had to get the youth involved in this. I'd like to get, thank Glenna Burden and Dejada for the hard work. Uh, I've been so busy, uh, with other things, and they took it by the reins and they just went for it. So, it is a great, great thing. Uh, man, I'm glad to see this come alive. And, uh, I think this would be great for Hutchinson, which is about time we get our youth involved and have, and what we say, they have a say. So, now they're going to have a say, and I hope it, it's going to work out great. I'm so excited about it. And, uh, I would like to thank them for all the hard work they've done. I apologize for me not being there. Like I said, uh, I've been really, really busy. But, uh, I think they've done a fabulous job. I like, uh, I like, uh, thanks to hear about the, uh, the diversity in it. Well, I think we can do that. And I think it's, this is a first step for, for this, this youth council is great. So, um, yes, I'd like to thank for the, the work. I'm glad this is going. This, we're starting it up.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments or questions?
Would it be only members from Hutchinson High School? Or what about the private high schools?
I don't know.
homeschooling or anything?
Um, right now, the bylaws are set for, um, enrolled students of hu- of a senior high school that is in Hutchinson. And, um, and enrolled freshmen from the HCC, uh, Community College, so.
Okay.
So, it could in theory be from the private schools as well?
As long as they're enrolled in a senior high school, yep.
Okay.
And a resident of Reno.
And a resident.
Of Hutchinson.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dejada, and thanks again to you and Glenna for your work. Okay, are there others in the audience who would like to address the council?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'm Carrie Mayu, uh, Ten Whitmore Road. Um, I'm with Hutchinson Community Foundation, and today I'm representing Heal Reno County Coalition. I'm with a couple of our partners. Uh, we want to share some information and a few invitations with you today. Uh, so the Heal Reno County Coalition's mission is to create a connected community, which will create a healthy community. Um, we advocate for policy systems and environment changes to make the healthy choice the easy choice. We serve as a communicator and connector among local groups working to advance health. And we host courageous conversations so that Reno County will become known as a place where people live long, active, healthy, and connected lives. For the last four years, we have held a Pathways to Healthy Kansas grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas. Um, and so since 2016, that grant brought over, well, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars from Blue Cross and Blue Shield to Hutchinson and Reno County, um, to help us work across six, seven pathways, um, of health. And those were framed around, um, community policy, schools, food retail, restaurants, healthcare, work sites, and resident well-being. For the city of Hutchinson, the most notable in, um, investment from that grant has been, um, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which was funded almost entirely by the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Pathways to Healthy Kansas Grant. Um, and, um, Southwest Brooktown Park, um, was, was contributed to, um, from the Pathways Grant. And now, we are working with the Parks Department on Bernard White Park. Um, a lot of those, um, improvements are coming because of the Pathways Grant. Um, and we have just been awarded, um, Phase Two, which is the next four years, and that will bring another four hundred thousand dollars total to Reno, Hutchinson and Reno County. Um, this time, um, the pathways are framed around the social determinants of health. Um, so we're taking a different approach this time, um, and we're asking that question, um, what about health in terms of our environment and our, um, our situations that we're in? Um, and really taking an equity and neighborhood approach. So, just a reminder that the social determinants are of health are community and social context, neighborhoods and physical environment, food, healthcare, education, and economic stability. And for Phase Two, our grant coordinator is Adam Stewart with Hetrack, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Good morning, city council. Um, my name is Adam Stewart. I'm the Neighborhood Development Coordinator with Hetrack. I'm also the Pathways, uh, Grant Coordinator for Heal. And, uh, as the Grant Coordinator, my role is going to be, um, being the person reporting to Blue Cross and Blue Shield about the, the things we're, uh, doing with the grant, um, doing the communication and paperwork with them, uh, as well as, you know, supporting all of the, the efforts, uh, that the grant is, uh, is supporting in our community, uh, over the next four years. Our approach, uh, for Phase Two, uh, the Phase Two Grant is going to be very community-driven. We're really eager to get, uh, the input from, um, residents of Hutchinson and Reno County on the things that they feel are important to the health of our community, um, and the things that they have a passion to get involved in. And our, we're, we're beginning that process of information gathering, um, at four o'clock this afternoon, um, at the Hutchinson Regional, uh, Medical Center Pavilion, uh, with our kickoff meeting for Phase Two. Uh, and you are all invited, as is, uh, anybody else in the community watching this who is interested in getting involved in making Hutchinson and Reno County a, a healthier place to live.
What, what kind of stuff?
No, you go ahead. I'm sorry.
For Phase Two, what kind of activities or can, like, what's the stipulations or the guidelines on, like, what are you going to be focusing in on, I guess, for Phase Two?
So, the, the grant is kind of fairly open-ended, as long as we're, we're addressing those, um, those social determinants of health, uh, as Carrie alluded to. Blue Cross and Blue Shield has, for Phase One, Blue Cross and Blue Shield has been very flexible with the specifics of how we implement those. So, I wouldn't expect things to be too different, uh, with Phase Two. And we're, you know, the, the specifics of, of what we're going to be putting that money into, you know, the, the meeting this afternoon is kind of the first step in determining that.
I just wanted, like, what are the guidelines, I guess? Like, what are the things you guys are going to be talking about? Is what I'm asking.
Okay.
There's probably like a, a array of things that it can be used to, and then you're going to focus it down to what you are going to use it for, or?
Yeah, um, I, I'm a little bit new to the, the pathways.
Maybe she can help. She looks like she wants to step forward.
Yeah, I'll let Carrie step in to speak.
Um, basically, working across the pathways, we need to either improve access to healthy eating, physical activity, or tobacco cessation. So, those are the three kind of lenses that we have to work on across the pathways.
What was that third one, Carrie? I apologize.
Sorry, tobacco cessation.
Oh, okay.
Tobacco cessation. So, when we're choosing our, what they call packages, our initiatives under each of those social determinants of health, we will be in some way impacting healthy eating, active living, or tobacco cessation. Um, the way that this grant is framed is that we have six to nine options under each pathway of directions we could take. So, like, under the neighborhood and social context pathway, we could choose to work on placemaking in neighborhoods, or we could choose to do a storyli- storytelling project, um, or we could choose, uh, community gardens, I think, is under that one, or maybe it's under food. We're still sorting through it all. Um, but that's what we want to get from the community, um, tonight, and, and a follow-up survey. Um, kind of what, what pathways, um, do, does the community feel like we should focus on first? We will, we will do all of them. That's our requirement over the next four years. But what do we put our most energy and our funding into first? Um, and then what do we drill into in that pathway? Um, so, we have lots of options, um, but all, all around those healthy.
As far as surveying and getting that community input, I have people who reach out to me on a regular basis with, with ideas like this. But they're not necessarily people who are, um, eager to go to a, a meeting setting, and they're a little shy about, about that. Um, so we, are you going to be providing that link to us that we can then send out to them? Is, is that a good way to do that?
Not only will we be providing it to everybody on the council, we will be, um, publicizing it widely on social media and, uh, other locations online, such as Hetrack's website.
Great. I think this gives a, a wonderful opportunity to involve people who wouldn't normally be those usual voices at the table. So, it's exciting.
I think you had more to add?
I do. My name's Denise Giblin Burbank, and I am with the United Way of Reno County as the Community Impact Coordinator. So, through the pathways, um, Grant, we've had the opportunity to start asking questions. And really, the biggest question that we've had the opportunity to start asking is what about health? And specifically, when looking at proposed policies and policies that are already in place. Um, using this lens has allowed us to give a unique perspective that takes into consideration the equitable opportunity for all Hutchinson and Reno County populations. Most re- recently, we have partnered with the Planning Commission to complete a health impact checklist on the commercial overlay district to help them consider the potential positive and negative health impacts of the policy. It is with this thought process that we have decided to host a Community Decision Making for Economic and Health Prosperity, Health in All Policies Workshop on September twenty-fourth from three-thirty to five-thirty. We would like to make a formal invitation to some of our newest policymakers in our community. Um, Councilwoman Bagwell, Councilman Steve Garza, and, um, and Jeff, um, to attend this workshop, to explore the potential impacts of asking the question, what about health when reviewing policies in the future.
Can you tell me where that will be held?
That will actually be a virtual event.
Okay.
We decided that that would be the best way to, um, do it safely, um, with everything going on.
Okay, thank you. And a, a link will be sent out?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Amy, did you have something to add? Well, we really appreciate you coming. I look forward to seeing you this afternoon, and hopefully, others can join. And people in our community, um, can also be there to provide input. So, thank you for the work you're doing. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Um, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Um, yes, but I did have one question about the League of Kansas Municipalities, um, Annual Conference. Are we, are we all just automatically going to be registered since we're voting delegates? Or do we need to reach out to you for registration?
You will need to let me know if you want to register for that, and I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Linda. Next item, please.
Item six A, consider ordinance authorizing bonded projects.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Karen Welpmer City Clerk. The city of Hutchinson will incur certain expenses prior to closing on the bonds. The reimbursement regulations, um, to comply with this, the city council must adopt the proposed ordinance to reimburse itself for the previous capital expenditures. The ordinance authorizes the bonding of the secondary treatment improvement in Apple Lane. The secondary treatment improvements bond will be paid from the sewer fund. On August eighteenth, twenty-twenty, the council approved a build design contract with Burns and McDonnell for the secondary treatment project. The bids for Apple Lane reconstruct will be opened this afternoon and brought before council on October sixth. While we have asked for the authorization of up to one point three million, the Director of Engineering believes our grant match of the bids will be closer to one million, or the project will be altered to fit the budget. Once council approves the budget, we will be able to reduce the bonding to the approved amount. Approving the ordinance with the higher amount allows us to continue the bonding process, receive the bond proceeds sooner, and minimize bonding costs with one bond sale. Other improved projects included in this bond sale need the bond proceeds. Staff and bonding council recommend approval of the ordinance as stated. Are there any questions?
So, you're basically just including the Apple Lane project in now, even though the engineering estimate is a little different? Because of the ability to aggregate the bonds for the sale?
Exactly, yep.
Okay. Okay. It, I still get a lot of questions about that Apple Lane project, but you're, you're basically saying that that's not even going to be bid until October?
Um, actually, I think that that bid opens this afternoon.
Oh, today? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it closes?
They will bring it to council October sixth.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I feel like we're really easy today. Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on this item?
A motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bond of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, to pay the cost of certain improvements all pursuant to chapter ordinance number fifty of the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six B, consider resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds and general obligation refunding bonds. Item six B, consider resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds and general obligation refunding bonds.
The city council has approved resolution, resolutions for reimbursements of expenditures totaling seven million five hundred seventy-five thousand for the projects. The city council now must consider authorizing a resolution which authorizes the sale of the general obligation bonds. The projects are the law enforcement scenery model, UV building upgrades, the Apple Lane reconstruction, zoo electrical upgrades, airport restroom, and the secondary treatment improvement. Piper, Sandler, and Company has identified four general obligation series that could potentially be refinanced with a lower interest rate for a total of seven million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If the bids for the refinancing do not represent a three percent value savings, then we are not obligated to refinance those bonds. So no additional expenses have been incurred. Staff recommends authorizing the resolution for the bond sale as presented.
Okay, is, are there questions, or is there a motion on the resolution?
I might just ask Chief, uh, for a question. Uh, I'm a little fuzzy on the status of the LEC Law Enforcement Center as it relates to, uh, has, has a contract been bid yet? Have we awarded a contract?
Yes, sir.
We have.
Um, so we are, we are several, we're a couple of months into the construction of that project.
Who's the general?
Uh, uh, Weens.
Okay, alright, yeah, I, I lost track of that, so.
That's okay. Um, we are, we're actually a little bit behind the projected finish date. Uh, the upstairs of the project is projected to be finished now sometime mid-October, and then the total project is looking like sometime late February.
Oh, wow.
For the completion of the project.
Okay.
Uh, we're still working on the, uh, we've also, like, uh, as you requested, that we look at, we've also got, uh, uh, as part of that project, um, we're gonna do the facade, the exterior facade. We actually have three different options depending on, uh, how much money we have left in the contingency fund to be able to accomplish that. So certainly it looks like that portion is going to be doable during the project as well, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Further questions or a motion on the resolution?
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately seven million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, principal amount of, uh, GIL bonds, series twenty twenty B, and approximately seven million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, principal amount of GIL refunding bonds, the series twenty twenty C, of the City of Hutchinson, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven A, consider final plat for Apple Lane second, a replat of the property at twenty-eight ten East Twentieth Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ryan Veetluk, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Hutchinson. Uh, before you this morning is a final plat, uh, final minor plat for twenty-eight ten East, uh, I'm sorry, yes, twenty-eight ten East, uh, Twentieth Avenue. Um, this is actually, if you remember, last year, uh, there was, I guess actually it was earlier this year, um, there was a amendment to our ordinances that allowed for this minor plat process. So it allows for administrative review, um, does not have good planning commission. Um, this is actually the first one of that, and, and the purpose of this plat is to actually remove platted setbacks. On the original Apple, um, Lane subdivision, there were forty-foot, uh, front and side yard setbacks. And so, um, that greatly exceeds what our zoning, um, setbacks are for the R four zoning district, which is twenty-five feet. And then on the, the, uh, street side yard, uh, we allow a fifty percent reduction, so it'd only be twelve and a half feet. So the, uh, property owner, um, would like to bring that plat, or, sorry, bring their lot, um, to allow for them to have the setbacks that are allowed for them under the zoning ordinance. So, um, that's what this is. Typically, um, what would happen is these will actually go on the consent agenda, um, but because this is the first one, we just wanted to kind of run through that process, so. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Are there other plats in the city that that new rule's gonna affect?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. We, we probably have about three or four other plats now that have already come through. Uh, previously, what would have happened, uh, if someone wanted to, um, remove platted setbacks, um, on their, their property, they would have to go through the full plating process. That would have been, uh, going to the planning commission. Um, and that, that takes an extra about month. Uh, so this, this shaves about four to six weeks off the process. So this, uh, plat came in, in, uh, uh, mid-August, and we're now mid-September, and, and it will be approved, uh, hopefully, uh, this morning. We'll get it signed and get those property owners down the road with what they wanna do, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, I will move to approve, uh, the recommendation of the Planning Department to approve the final plat for the Apple Lane second edition.
Yeah, I would like to say that it's kind of nice to see something that you've kind of looked towards the future for, and then now coming fruition. I know it's just a small little paperwork thing, but thank you very much.
Little things help. I mean, that's really what we, we're trying to do, is look at our ordinances and trying to figure out ways that we can, uh, make this process more efficient, yet still give the public opportunity to comment, um, and allow the, you know, everybody to still that opportunity, but not have to go through a rigorous process or something like this.
Thank you. I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hiros DeCarvallo?
Yes, thanks again for your work, Ryan. Next item, please.
Item seven B, consider Orchard Park's security issues.
Oh, yes.
How we came to a solution?
Uh, with a recommendation. How about that? Uh, good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. I think it was about a month ago, um, we talked about some of the issues we were having at Orchard Park. We indicated at that time that we would come back with some recommendations as how we can, uh, kind of improve that, uh, situation up there. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, Todd Davis, IT Director, and Chief Hooper and I sat down and kind of talked through what that could look like, kind of did some brainstorming, and came up with kind of a three-phase process that's, that's outlined in the memo in the packet. Um, I'm gonna go over it real briefly, and then Todd and Chief Hooper will talk a little bit more, uh, in detail about their specific role in that. But basically, the three phases are, the first phase would be to add cameras, um, which is something we can do relatively quick and relatively inexpensively. Uh, second phase would be to add a park patrol, um, so it'd be, uh, officers or, or PSAs from the Police Department that would help us kind of patrol that park as well as other parks. And then the third phase or third option would be to actually gate the park, um, and close the park each night, opening it each morning. Um, and it makes sense, the, the order makes sense from a staffing standpoint, just because of the gate creates so many problems as far as opening and closing, and we'll talk about that a little bit more detail. Um, but my goal today, we don't really have an action item, is just to get some feedback from city council, um, and just understand kind of what your expectations are, and, and give us some kind of direction as we can kind of progress on this topic, so. Um, with that, I'm gonna have Todd come up and explain a little bit more about the camera system we, we can use, and then Chief Hooper will talk about.
Do we have any other parks with camera systems?
Parks, we do not, no. We don't have any, uh.
At first, I see like extreme, I'm like, cameras, patrol, like, we really just can't. I was thinking, um, as a complete question, but, so are parks closed at midnight instead of like curfew time?
Correct. Uh, so, so, yeah, that, that would be part of that, that third, or, well, it could be part of really any phase, is changing the, uh, you know, when the parks close. Um, we do have some legitimate activity that happens, you know, between ten and midnight, um, our rental buildings, uh.
Is that mostly in Cary Park and Rice?
Cary Park and Rice Park. Um, you know, there are some things, um, out at, um, Orchard Park as far as fishing. People like to fish, especially in the heat of the summer, um, as la- later in the evening as possible. So there would be, I think, a little bit of pushback, um, if, if we did. Uh, but the reality is, the majority of this is already happening after midnight anyway, so moving those hours up to say ten or eleven, I don't think fixes the problem. Uh, you know, we're not getting graffiti at nine o'clock, we're getting graffiti at two in the morning, so.
Justin, this might be a, a question that's more appropriate for Chief Hooper, but do we have a feeling for who these people are? And, I mean, the reason I, I ask is because I, I certainly hope that the approach we take if we do take phase two on the patrol side would be more of an education. I, I just have a sense that this might be young people, and I don't wanna
Right.
put the hammer down hard on them when we've kind of created the situation that allowed this to bloom. And so, I, I would just hope any approach we take is like, hey, like, you can't be doing this, you know?
I agree completely, yeah, yeah. And that's, it was a conversation we kind of had already, but yeah, I'll let Chief address that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are, uh, obviously, this has been a problem for some time, not just at Orchard Park, but, but all our parks, but specifically in Orchard Park, we're very familiar with the players, um, here. There's actually a, a group, a kind of a car club group, I think there's a representative here today to speak as well, um, that frequents Orchard Park in the evenings. And, uh, eve- I was out on patrol just this Friday night with my guys fairly late, and some of my officers were up there uh, with that group talking to them, and it's more of a good community engagement, community relations piece. In fact, we've kind of asked that group, because they're, they, they use the park for legitimate purposes, they're peaceful, they don't cause any of the damage, and they're kind of stewards for us up there, and kind of keep an eye on the park that they also value, um, as well. Uh, and so, it's, it's not those typical groups like that. We're talking, we suspect it's young people uh, that are out past curfew, that are out late at night, um, that are causing the, causing the issues for us. Uh, and we, we have, we make frequent trips up there, we've connect, connected with several different groups, and we do work the education piece, talking about the park and take care of your park, and that's appeared to be fairly, um, effective, but we've had a couple, you know, three or four incidents here in the last few months that have resulted in damage specifically to that park, so.
Okay.
I have a question about the cameras. Are they gonna be stationary, or could we have some kind of mobile cameras that we, once, we don't have to keep it there permanently? Like, maybe if we, it could be used to be moved to other parks in the future that are having issues at the time?
Instead of that, what I, those, those kind of cameras are typically very expensive unless we go with like a, um, you know, a Hunter's camera that we just hang somewhere and then take down later. Uh, instead of that, what I would recommend that we do would be to schedule those cameras to only be recording or even only, you know, doing video during the time when the park is closed. So that, that capability exists with the system that we're looking at.
And how much is that gonna cost the taxpayers?
Uh, so the phase one of this, which would be the, uh, the entranceway, the, uh, you know, kind of the path down through, and then around the, uh, around the, the playground, uh, that's about five thousand dollars to, to implement that. Uh, and then phase two, if the problems continued, or they ended up, um, down by the pond, would be as the pond was more developed to add cameras back there.
I think.
And that's another, you know.
I think cameras should be the last step, not the first step, because, you know, it's almost like, I mean, it's a big money dollar, and it's kind of.
Well, the, I, I think the thinking is that, um, that it's expensive to have staff, and that this is a one-time five thousand dollar cost, where if you have people that have to visit the park constantly, uh, that's an expense that is an ongoing expense, and so, uh, the expectation there was kind of do the, the least expensive, simplest thing first. Uh, and the remoteness of the park is part of the issue that we're struggling with.
Yeah, but isn't it part of the police's job to just go patrol there periodically anyways? So how much of that cost is really being additionally incurred? And what is the camera, if they catch anything, you're still gonna have to have patrol go up there?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we patrol all our parks, the remoteness of that park is, is an issue. Um, and that part of town typically has less crime than other parts of town. So on a Friday or Saturday nights, or nights that sometimes this is occurring, if we've got emergency calls for service, they tend to be closer to the southern part of the community. Uh, we do our best to try to get up there every evening, but certainly can't guarantee that based on our car, call load. Uh, if we did install cameras, um, the one issue with that is it doesn't necessarily prevent crime. It's not a really good deterrent of that crime. The hope would be that it would give us enough information to be able to identify who's committing that crime and be able to take enforcement action on them, so if they're a continual offender, we would put a stop to the, the course of action at that, that point.
Is there any, um, alternative video, like if we just had a temporary, like, camera put up there until we found the perpetrators, I guess you could say, like, that wouldn't cost five thousand dollars?
Well, I'd have to, uh, Todd would have to answer that, but just knowing from, since I've been here, I've been here almost two years, and this is not a unique problem to Orchard Park. We have problems, we have damage in all our parks. In fact, that's one of those concerns that's gotten back to me since this conversation started, is, don't just focus on Orchard Park, because we have these problems in all our parks, Rice Park and, and Cary Park as well. And so why, why only focus on, on safety and security in, in one of the parks?
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I think that the reason this came to the forefront is because we did have citizens who were engaged in the council process and reached out about what we could do, but I, I certainly agree that anything we do needs to be a larger conversation about creating a, a safer environment in all of our parks. We certainly don't wanna create equity issues, um.
And I, I know that you guys are probably aware, because we talked about it early on during the COVID, uh, issue, is that we did utilize our PSA programs, uh, for security patrols for downtown businesses and things like that when they were closed, uh, during the first, the pan- the COVID shutdown. And we also, at that same time, used that same personnel to patrol our parks. Um, and we got quite a bit of feedback, people seeing them in the park, appreciating, uh, them being there. But of course, we only carried that for a limited period of time, just kind of through that pandemic. And so, um, that program in itself saved us about sixty-six thousand dollars last year. Um, so we didn't have to pay officers overtime for different functions within the Police Department. And so, if we're gonna look at something like that, we all have, already have a program in place, already have trained personnel, uh, we would have to add some more hours, um, and some money to the budget to accommodate that. And your patrol is only as good as, I mean, you're, you, you can't be there the whole time. Uh, but it would increase our, our law enforcement or security presence in, in all our parks, we would have that type of opportunity.
Yeah. Have we done any kind of outreach to people in that neighborhood? On, on maybe what their ideas are? I don't know if that's appropriate, or it seems like, since they're the ones having the, the biggest challenges around this.
Go ahead. Um, I, I do know we have one resident, um, local resident nearby, uh, in the audience. I did send this to her, um, prior to this meeting, so she's at least aware of that plan. I didn't get any feedback, but I'm sure, Lovella, if you've got opinions or ideas, we'd love to hear them.
I would be happy to get them.
Alright.
Okay, so I'm Lovella Kelly, and I happen to live across the road from the park. And I know all of the things you're talking about are important, but the issue that concerns us, the people that live there, is safety of the vehicles that are racing and causing tremendous issues, beginning sometimes late in the afternoon. Uh, my son's here visiting from DC, and he said, why is this park open till midnight? And to me, that's the first thing we need to address, because there's nothing that goes on in that park after dark that's important. And you talked about fishing. Have you ever been there in the evening? There's nobody fishing in there after dark. So why are we open till midnight when dusk to dawn is what, for instance, Dylan Nature Center gates and closes at a specific time? I know this is a gathering place for young people, and I understand they need a place to gather, but what's happening is, uh, extremely, uh, dangerous. And the lights that come out of the park happen to shine into my living room every night, and what I see is cars coming out of there, barely stopping, and then they race down Forty-third Street to Halsted, and then continue to race, and the line of vision from the west is very limited. There, and during daylight hours, there's almost always walkers or bikers, uh, on that road, and it's also, it's already very dangerous. And it already has a speed limit of forty-five, which is excessive, particularly since with the bridge closed, there's no place to go except to the old highway, which is their racing point. If you go to the old highway and turn right to the cul-de-sac and go down, uh, and look at it, the tire marks are incredible, where they go down and spin their tires. I've been in the park where several times where a car has been speeding, stops, and I guess, I don't know what they do with their tires, but there's smoke everywhere. And one evening in my, I was there with some of my grandchildren. We actually left the park because it was becoming scary. So, I think, in my opinion, the, the biggest issue is closing the park at dark. And I know maybe that sounds, um, desperate. Cameras, I don't know.
I don't know. I'm, to me, the common sense solution is, close the park at dark and put a gate up, have it open in the morning at six o'clock in the morning, have a police officer. Have it opened in the morning at six o'clock in the morning, have a police officer close it at nine at night or ten at night.
That, that is also my, my highest recommendation. One of the other things that could be done is there could be some speed bumps put in the park. That would slow down that traffic. There are, I, as far as I know, there are no speed limit signs in the park itself, right? Right. So, I mean, it's a heyday. And it isn't, I mean, it's very loud and very noisy. That really isn't the big issue. I'm just concerned that something really serious is going to happen with the speed and the racing. And, um, I, I, to me, the important things are the closing time, the speed limits, and a gate. And you know, we in the neighborhood would be happy to become part of a system to assist in that process. Of closing and opening the gate. I don't know how that figures into anything, but we do. Now, I know that there are car, uh, cars, whatever they do with the cars, and that's not the issue. It's, it's the people that have these really high-speed vehicles that are causing the dangerous situations to occur. Both in the park and on the streets surrounding. And you know, I've had mail stolen out of my mailbox. I've had political fines stolen. So there is somebody that's not using the park the way it should be. Anyway, that's, um, my opinion.
Oh, what? Sorry, I don't mean to interject again. One of the things I thought about with the gate is if you have a closing time for the park. You could close the gate forty-five minutes after to allow anybody that might still be in there to get out. And at that point, if they're not out forty-five minutes after the close of the park, then that's kind of their own fault.
They're there and have to call mommy and daddy to come and get them? That probably wouldn't happen too often.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if there was a, uh, time period between the close of the park and the gate closing. It kind of gets rid of the fact that, oh, well, the gate, you know, I was way back here. No, you have forty-five minutes to get out before the date, before the gate closes.
And I don't know if it has occurred at Dylan Nature Center or not, but I've never heard of anybody being trapped in there.
Well, I think that there definitely need to be, you know, an education time period where we're training the public, if we, if we did decide to go this way.
I think the gate is what needs to happen. I really don't care about security cameras or ways, or doing that. When I don't think it's going to actually solve anything. I mean, really, to be realistic, you have to think about it. Put a time on it, put a gate on it and call it good. That's what most public parks that are more remote do.
And you know, there, I've also, I've talked about everybody in my neighborhood about this issue. Someone mentioned to me that she's really tired of doing her early morning walk out there and having people jump out of the woods, cause they've spent the night in the woods. Cause there are areas in that park where you absolutely cannot tell if there are people there or not. And it's a beautiful park and it's a wonderful park, and we've got to figure out a way to maintain it for those that it was intended to be for. And that's handicapped and small children.
I do think that whatever we do needs to be applied uniformly. So if we're talking about changing the ordinance that limits park open times. I think that that's gonna be a big conversation community-wide.
But why does it have to be city-wise? Why ca- is, is there a special ordinance for closing Dylan Nature Center? Of course, that's not in the city.
Well, yeah, it's, it's owned actually by, you know, the Hutchinson Recreation Commission. So it's, it's just a different. You know, it's public property. Y- w- we need to definitely involve the public in the conversation.
But we know that, that people drive through Kerry Park in the evenings, and that's really nice. I don't have an issue with that. It's the safety of what's happening in the park.
My concern is that if we only address it on the northeast side, um, which I'm committed to doing, that we're going to transfer it to another area of the community. And impact, uh, perhaps another neighborhood. Um.
But I'm gonna ask you a question. If that was occurring at a, a mid-city park, would, would, would we still tolerate what's happening at this park?
No, I don't think it should be tolerated, period. I just don't want it to be tolerated anywhere.
I think you can always put exceptions in. When you write stuff, you can, you could, most parks that we have are for children. And they're not gonna be out there playing after curfew, and they shouldn't be at the parks hanging out or doing drugs after curfew anyways.
Well, I don't know what curfew is in Hutchinson. Is it eleven o'clock? But that's way too late to be in a park. Nothing good happens after that.
But I, and I know that like with Rice Park and you could put verbiage in there that excludes if there's any kind of game or baseball game or event.
I think we just need to be careful about being too restrictive on the use of public parks. And there's already a perception in this community that we put more emphasis and investment on the north side than we do the south side. So if we're creating an environment where north side parks are safer, but we're not applying that same policy uniformly to south side parks. What kind of message are we sending?
Well, that's what you're doing when you think about just putting the cameras up there.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not saying the cameras are a great idea either. I mean, this is all up for conversation.
I'm saying that, like, if you talk about Grandview Park, you know what I mean, and the people that are out there. There's issues all over the place with some of our parks. And I think one of the ways you could address that is, is, um, taking this issue and applying it to all the parks. I think there should be a curfew on the parks with exceptions to Rice Park, Kerry Park at certain times. I mean, cause people shouldn't just be hanging, like, there's some not-so-good things that happen at some of our parks at night.
For sure.
Well, I have witnessed a drug transaction, and I know there's drinking, underage drinking. And if you're talking about COVID, uh, protocol, I mean, it doesn't exist in the park. I mean, this has been going on all summer, uh, there out in the park. What happens, I think, is what I've been told is kids from Bueller and then the kids from Hutch that know each other gather there, which is not a bad thing. But, uh, we just need to figure out a way that that can be done.
Well, and this alt- to me, sounds like band-aiding. Uh, maybe, maybe a greater call to action would be to consider how we as a community are creating, um, opportunities for young people to recreate in a more productive fashion, you know? And hopefully what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting with the youth council can, can be a part of that solution. But, yeah, I just, I hesitate to say, um, you know, just shut everything down. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to shutting the parks down early. I just, I think we need to have a greater conversation in the community about it. And I'd be interested in hearing from the chief. Are there certain parks that have, that you get called to more that you're, you're observing more of these problems at?
I also think that. I think that there are some parks in the city, particularly in the middle of the city, that there are homeless people that are, are sleeping. And I don't have a problem with that. But that's not occurring, that's not what the issue is at Orchard Park. So I think you need to look at that a little bit differently. Anyway.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. It's really helpful to have your insight as a neighborhood resident up there.
Yeah, to answer your question, Madam Mayor, I mean, Kerry Park is by far our highest call volume. Um, it's one more widely-used park. It's a bigger park. There's a lot more activities going down there. So it, the numbers are kind of skewed, because when you put that many people in a park, even at ballgames, you know, we have an accident or things like that. Uh, but still, after hours, there's still far more people in Kerry Park. Uh, and that's one of the challenges. Uh, because the parks are, we're so spread out. We have a large, we have twenty-four square miles in the city. So it's a spread-out city anyway, and then you throw something like Orchard Park, uh, you know, out there. And so it's hard to get the extra patrol there. Kerry Park, we, we're in there a lot. I mean, anytime we take somebody to the jail, the officers drive that route and drive through there. And so there's a lot more police presence there too, but the call volume is actually, is highest in that park.
Okay.
For sure. Um, I do know that there's a member of that car club here, uh, Chaz, that wants to, it's, address the council as well.
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested in your input.
I'm Chaz Porter, and I'm here to talk about the park, um, in regards to the people that actually hang out there. Um, so as me and Chief have talked about, um, all summer, the problem that she is explaining, the drug use, the alcohol use, um, the damage of property and stuff of that nature. It's happening from kids that are a lot younger than us. So we are all ages twenty and up, basically, that we hang out there after hours, or I say after hours. We go out there by eight o'clock every night. We leave by about ten o'clock every night, and we go drive around the city, down Main Street, this, that, and the other, you know? We're not in the park until midnight. Um, there is cases where we do sit out there with a couple buddies, park our trucks up, and we do sit out there until midnight until the park closes. Um, as me and the chief have also talked about, the call numbers have gone down since school started, as I told him they would. Correct? Calls have gone down? There has been a couple of accidents out there. I'm sure you're well aware of those. Um, the two accidents that did occur out there, the two rollovers. Were both vehicles that, uh, you wouldn't assume, not Mustangs, Camaros, fast cars, big trucks, stuff like that. Um, one was an SUV and one was a small, I believe it was a Nissan four-door car. So it wasn't a fast race car by any standards. Um, as far as the speed bumps go, I think that's what you guys are mainly focusing on right now. Is getting the problem of the speeding or reckless driving solved, correct? So we're not much, we're not as much worried about kids hanging out there. We're more worried about the safety of the driving. I think the speed bumps would be a great idea for that. That would slow down a lot of people out there. I don't think that the gate's necessarily a good idea, because there is more than one way in that park. Um, for a car, maybe not. For a truck, the truck can get in there many different ways. There's a couple of different gates around the park, and there are many ways in that park, other than just through the front place. Um, I guess if you guys did do the gate, what timeframe are we thinking? I mean, are we doing this? Are we shutting down just this park at a certain time? I mean, cause then if we, let's say we shut the park down at eight o'clock, everyone's just gonna move to a different part of town. You know, so you take the park away, we move down to South Main. At what point do we close South Main down? Then we're gonna move back up to Kmart. I mean, this problem's gonna go everywhere. If the problem is, if the problem is truly us meeting and hanging out and not causing a disruption. It's gonna be, just what it's gonna be. It's gonna be happening regardless. So I don't think there, I think we're focusing on the wrong thing, I guess. Um, as far as shutting the park down at an earlier time, I don't think that's gonna create the problem. And, I mean, I guess I don't know how involved you guys are with the officers in the community, but ask any one of them by my name. Ask them if they've talked to me out there. I'm out there every single night. And you're more than welcome to come out. I'll be out there tonight. There will be a bunch of trucks, and after this meeting, I'll show you a picture I took, um, last night, actually, of all of us out there.
But aren't you guys racing?
No. I drive a Chevy fifteen-hundred truck. So no, I don't do any racing out there.
Do you observe any other racing out there?
No, not in the park. Um, as you said, out on Old K sixty-one, there is racing that does happen out there. I don't know how frequently that is. Um, I don't go out there and watch the racing, so I wouldn't necessarily know on that. Well, so then that's more of an issue of Old K sixty-one and not necessarily the park, because the park is not gonna be a meeting place for them. They don't come in there. We don't like them in there. They are taking away what we like to do at night. Every night we go out there and we just talk, hang out, nothing bad. It keeps a lot of kids out of trouble being out there. And the officers do come through, they do talk to us. They get out, they stay out there for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes every night. Just talking to us, say, hey, what's going on, guys? Checking up on us, making sure we're doing okay in life. That's a pretty good thing right now.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thanks for your input. That's really helpful.
Old K sixty-one's in the county, right?
It is.
Okay, so that technically, the racing there is technically the county's problem.
It's something.
On Forty-third going west?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I do think, I, I think what you're actually hearing is there is a lot of loud cars that do drive out there, and they will drive through the park, and then they will leave. I think you're just hearing the loud exhaust. I used to own a very loud car. I understand that the cars are loud. But, you know, going from zero to forty, from that stoplight, or from that stop sign to the other stop sign, the stop line coming, stop sign coming out of the park and a stop sign at Halsted. It's honestly kind of difficult to get to forty-five between there and the stop sign. As you said, it's, the, the speed limit is very high for that area. I will agree with you on that point. I think the speed limit should be brought down to thirty or thirty-five. Um, in my truck, I know I cannot get from zero to forty-five and have enough time to slow down at that stop sign. So if the kids are trying to leave the park and get to forty-five and then slow down again, I think that's probably what you're gonna hear is their loud exhausts.
But you can also tell when a car is going to pass.
Agreed. And I'm not, I'm not saying that people are not driving fast out there. I one-hundred percent agree, but I don't think that that's an issue that you're gonna solve by closing the park. I think that that fast driving issue is gonna come from the Old K sixty-one and the racing at night. I don't think that's gonna come from the park necessarily. And I'll show you the picture. Well, I'll show you the picture that I took, um, that shows you all the vehicles in this parking lot, um, that we associated.
Well, and maybe that's a, maybe that's a conversation that we could have with Sheriff Chief, um, and see about what kind of mitigation options he might recommend. Um, Justin, you don't have an advisory committee for parks, do you? I'm wondering.
No, I do not.
Well, I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to, I, I mean, I don't wanna make a hasty decision of changing a, an ordinance when we clearly don't have any kind of agreement on what's best. And, and we're not taking into consideration all the different factions.
Well, I, I, one thing I want to throw out there too is, you know, we've, we have concerns with the cameras. We have concerns with the gate and, and with the time change. Um, we haven't talked much about creating this park patrol, um, you know? And that can be, be equitable throughout the community. So they wouldn't just go to, to Orchard. They could go, um, out to all of our parks. They could have those positive conversations. They could continue to meet with the car club, um, you know, they can meet with local residents. Um, you know, maybe that's the first step, is we try that program. They're part-time employees, so, you know, we're not into it for a ton of money at that point. And there are some salaries there, but again, you know, there's, there's no benefits or anything like that. So that might be the, the, an easy first step. Uh, if that doesn't work, then maybe we look at something a little bit more harsh, I guess, which would be the gating and something like that. So. Just based on this conversation, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but I just, um, the point of this is.
That appeals to me. It's kind of a subtle, uh, first step, uh, in the name of, uh, community, neighborhood policing. And building relationships with law enforcement, that, 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 that may be the best first step.
And that was really, when we did that this summer for the businesses in the parks, it was really well-received. They gotta get out and talk to people. It's more the education piece that we talked about. It's checking on people's safety, uh, and those type of things. And it, you know, if we, if we schedule that so that it overlaps closing time of the parks. The last thing they can do is they can do a sweep of all the parks and make sure that, you know, everybody's left and, at midnight or whatever the case may be. And, and then, uh, you know, then they'd go off duty. But, uh, w- we were kind of kicking around some numbers, and I was looking at the hours based on what those PSAs made. Cause of this, we already have the program in place. Um, depending on whether we just wanted to do it during the summer months, or whether you wanted to do it during the winter months. If we did it year-round, we're probably talking around somewhere between twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in personnel, uh, costs for that. Um, if we wanted to limit it to summer months or the months when those parks are most used, we obviously could cut back on that. Uh, but I would recommend a four-hour patrol, maybe from nine to one, or eight to midnight, or eight-thirty to twelve-thirty or something like that in the evenings.
I think there's a lot more added value to a, to that.
For sure.
As far as the price tag goes and.
And since we already have a, we already have a, a system in place, we already have, you know, we have the PSA program, we have radios for them already, we have a vehicle, uh, for them already. We would just have to add a couple extra personnel, because most of the people that are involved in that program are college students at HCC or Sterling. Uh, that are in the, basically, it's a training and mentoring program that for, we hired, we've hired three of them out of that program for officers. And so we would have to hire specific PSAs for this task that worked part-time but worked every night. Um, and so we would have to add some personnel for that, but.
I like that idea, and I think that twenty-five thousand dollars is a really economical solution when you consider the amount of damage that can be prevented. Um, I do think that we still need to do, I know that K sixty-one isn't our problem per se, but it's affecting our residents, so it is our problem. So I would, would like to see us also, um, interface with the, with the sheriff's office and see what, what we can do to prevent the, the racing there. Um, but I, I love that idea, Justin, and I'm glad, Chief, that you've already kind of thought through that. So I, I agree with you, Sarah, concerns around the camera. There's, there's concerns about, you know, lots of pieces of, of this. But I'm hoping this could be a good start. When do you think we could ramp that up?
I think there's more equity involved in the patrolling versus just adding cameras to one park.
For sure.
Like I said, we already have the program in place. Um, it would just be hiring the appropriate personnel for that. I certainly have enough money this year in unused salaries to cover the cost this year. And, and I certainly would have enough on, in unused salaries to cover any additional cost next year, uh, for that program. So I certainly could encompass it in my current budget. I would just be hiring the appropriate personnel and training them up. So in, in reality, we could probably have it up and running in a month or so, I would guess.
Oh, fantastic. Did you have thoughts? Oh, yes, Steve?
Jay?
Yes.
It's Ms. Garza here. Can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Um, this is not a commonplace, this is not a common problem in Hutchinson. As everybody knows, I was in high school in the seventies. And the problems we had back then, not a problem, is the kids would come up and down Main Street. And sometimes they would get a little faster than they would before. This is not an uncommon problem. The problem just moved more. This is why I had an idea of a youth council. I would invite you guys to, uh, have a project. Maybe this might be a project for the youth council to talk about. See what they come up with some ideas. This is the reason why we formed the youth council, so kids can have somewhere to go to, uh, uh, go with their problems that they see in the city. We don't want to discourage our kids. We want them for something to do for them to have to say. This is the biggest reason why I wanted a youth council. Maybe this is a, a project they can talk about and see if they come up with some answers with this, so.
Hey, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I, I don't want to discourage the car group. In fact, if anything, I think they're probably a moderating force when they're in the. Yeah, I, I don't wanna discourage the car group, in fact, if anything, I think they're probably a moderating force when they're in the park, uh. So I, I think we don't wanna infringe on their ability to meet and gather, so. I like the patrol idea.
City manager, would you be in favor of something like that, or do you have any reservations?
If there's an appetite to fill out the positions, I think it's a pretty good solution. I do think there's some, uh, secondary effects of the car club from time to time, but I don't wanna suggest this gentleman here today is in any way responsible for that, he can't control that group and it's a growing group and it's a big group, there's guys rolling out there that have five and six thousand dollar exhaust systems on their cars so everyone can hear it. Um, he has to manage some of that within the ranks of his group and I think he does try to do that. So I know that there's a, a, a willingness on their part to do that, that's greatly appreciated. Boots on the ground.
Okay.
Probably your best solution, in my opinion.
Okay. Fantastic, well, thanks to all of you for walking us through that and for your ideas and, um, was it Chaz?
Yes.
And Lovella, thank you so much for, for coming to the meeting, we'll see what we can get done for that area. Okay, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Sarah, let's start with you.
Oh, I don't have any, anything today, okay.
Steve? Can you hear me okay?
Is that, is that me?
Yep.
Okay, this phone's cutting in and out, I just wanna say, um, this is really different doing it on my phone, but, uh, I'll be back next week and, and hope, uh, I'll be back next week and, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Steve, what about you, John?
Uh, just a question on kind of a status of the CARES Act, uh, at the federal level, as far as what do we know at this point in terms of what level of funding will funnel directly to the city of Hutchinson?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, I could get Karen back in here.
I can get her.
Would you please, thank you. She's probably closest to the fire on that and has been tracking it throughout the whole period of time for us, so.
While we're waiting for Karen, Ryan, did we get applicants for the daycare money?
Honestly, we've only had a, just a couple, um, but typically we'll see a crush the last day, so applications do close today at five, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If, uh, anybody is interested.
I was actually, thank you for bringing that up.
Mm-hmm.
I know, one of the things that I realized that was a hurdle for the daycares was the one, one employee because a lot of our daycares are like home-based daycares with one person who watches like eight kids.
Yeah, that's what this was designed for.
And, and those, those, uh, those folks are still eligible, I mean, they.
Even though they don't have a, one employee with a low income, like, you know.
Well, that's unfortunately a federal, that's a federal issue, if, if you're getting CDBG funds, it does have to be for low to moderate income folks, but um, yeah, we, we have had actually a couple of sole proprietors, you know, um, who, that is their business and, and they.
And they themselves would qualify as the employee?
You can, yes, you just have to certify that you are low to medium income and then you would have to, um, provide a copy of your, uh, typically it's like your Schedule C on your taxes that shows.
Yeah, cause I think that might have been something that a, some of them might have like, oh, I don't have an employee, I just have myself. Cause you normally, if you're a sole proprietor, you're an owner, you're not an employee.
Yep, and, and, and so.
So, I didn't know if any of that was, any kind of information on that was maybe given out, or?
Uh, it, it's, yeah, I mean, it, probably could be a little clearer, but, uh, yes, sole proprietors are eligible and we have had some sole proprietors who have applied, so. Um, you know, the, uh, the, the other issue that, um, we're running into is unfortunately some of our, uh, daycares are nonprofits and the nonprofits are not eligible for this, this pool of funding, and that's, that's not a city limitation, that's a federal limitation. Um, but I have been reminding folks that, uh, the, the county, uh, Spark Funds, they are gonna be asking for nonprofits and that, uh, those folks should look into applying for those, uh, those funds, because there's, I believe, one point one million or so that the county's put aside for nonprofits, so.
And that would be anybody in the county, not just outside of Hutch?
It would be anybody in the county, including the city of Hutchinson.
Great, well, on the CDBGCV funds, anything that's not applied for in this round will roll into the next round?
Yes, and we anticipate probably, um, putting that on the streets maybe as soon as next week, once we kinda see what we think we'll have left.
Okay.
And bring that to you all probably, um, your second meeting in October, so we can get, get those funds out to businesses, cause I've, I've got about ten applications sitting on my desk now, still for businesses, so.
Perfect.
We're gonna have to tweak it a little bit to try to stretch those funds as much as we can, but, um, we, we wanna try to serve as many businesses as possible. So we're doing well, we've got our first, uh, our first, uh, disbursement, I think will be coming from the state this week and it's about forty-five thousand dollars, so um, that first round of, of funds, um, is, is quickly getting spent down and going out to the businesses that need it, so.
Oh, great.
We're pleased about that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Was there a question about the CARES money?
Yeah, Karen, I was just curious, is the status from the city of Hutchinson, the CARES, the federal CARES Act?
We had a.
Wha- what, uh, are we looking at as, uh, a level of funding directly to the city?
Sure, so yesterday we had a Zoom meeting with the county and with John and Gary Meager, and we were approved all of our reimbursement expenditure funding, funding of the thirty, little over thirty thousand dollars, uh, and we were approved for what we estimated our costs would be from August first to December thirtieth, we were also approved of that, so Angela was going to talk at the staff meeting tomorrow and about that, and about getting purchase orders, um, in place.
So total amount is?
Total amount.
I didn't bring it with me, it's back at my desk, I think it's a little over a million.
Okay.
A little over a million.
I think so.
Uh, that that would make us whole, a- as best as possible?
I'm sorry?
That would make us whole as a city?
Y- yes, yes.
For reimbursement purposes?
Mm-hmm, yes, for what was on the list, i- it has to stay with that list that we provided.
Yeah.
The county, that then provided to the state, we can't change that list at all.
So you estimate around a million dollars?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And my understanding is also that some of that is not so much making us whole, but it's, uh, preventative measures that we, uh, would be able to do as a result of the funding, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So it's, some of it's dollars that we haven't even yet spent, but it'll allow us to be, uh, bigger and better at preventing this.
Okay, that's how that works, and.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank, thanks Karen.
You're welcome.
Anything else, John? Okay, what about you, Nancy?
Nope, nothing, I asked my question, out of sync.
I had a few questions, um, short ones, hopefully. Any plans for opening city hall, or do we have a date on that?
We do not have a date, it's something I anticipate discussing with department heads during the next staff meeting, to kinda see where we're at with that.
Okay, perfect, and then, um, apologies for sounding like a broken record, cause I bring this up all the time, that the property out at Fun Valley, we discussed having a conversation with interested, I guess, parties, um, who wanna use, who wanna use that, um, property, uh. That's all been put on hold for the last few months, I didn't know if we wanted to discuss when, if that could still take place this year, because I'm assuming anybody who would be interested in using it would probably want to use it next spring. Justin, I don't know if you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh, I think the last, kinda we talked about was doing that in the fall, so having that, those presentations or the, the, that, those proposals uh, that we'd meet with them sometime this fall, so yeah, I think that's still very doable, we'll have to figure out how to do it with social distancing and those sorts of things, um, but yeah, that's still the intent, is this fall and then hopefully have a solid direction from there, so.
Okay.
Whichever direction we go, uh, we can start that process, you know, over the winter and in the spring.
Okay, would you, and would you be reaching out directly to the two who have already indicated an interest and then putting a, I don't know if we wanna do another RFP, we already did an RFP.
Yeah, that's one thing I think we need to think through, is what, who do we invite, what's that process, is it an open invitation? Um, those sorts of things, so, cause there's actually a third group as well that has reached out to me.
Okay.
And they missed the RFP, um, it was a few weeks after the RFP, they were in, they showed interest in the site, didn't even know the R, RFP was out there.
Okay.
Um, so, so there's, I've been contacted by three groups now, so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that, I know that there's a lot of other things going on, but I continue to get calls and really don't have direction on, on what we wanna do with that property, so. And, didn't you apply for a grant through Wildlife and Parks?
We did, through, um, the Trails Grant through Kansas Wildlife and Parks, um, we should know, I would guess, within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Um, whether we are awarded that, and that was for us to develop a, a canoe launch there, so. Um, so we could still go other directions with the property as far as having some sort of lease or some sort of vendor right or something.
Okay.
This just allows us to improve the roadway, uh, would put a small parking lot and then improved access down to the actual river.
Is there roadway issues there with adjacent property lines and the washout as far as access goes for the city?
Uh, yes, the intent would be to go completely away from that county right away. Uh, cause right now, they're just, that's actually a- along Fourth Street, that's all county. Right away, they're just kinda pulling off down onto the side of the bridge, so the intent was we, we would open up an improved canoe launch, uh, further upriver a little bit on the property we own, that would avoid all the, all the erosion issues and all that that's going on there now, yeah.
Okay, well, keep us apprised of that and
Okay.
I'll, uh, let people know that that's still an opportunity to be, have their ideas heard.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll kinda start thinking about what that process looks like and then we can continue to have that conversation and then maybe this, on the next couple of months or so, we'll, we'll get that organized.
Okay, fantastic, thanks so much, Justin. Well, Jeff, happy to have you back, what do you have for us?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate the warm welcome, it's been a while. We put one of these at your seats and, uh, it's pretty thick, uh, it's got a lot of data-related information, it's the Standards of Cover Community Risk Assessment prepared by and for the fire department, and it is in large part for accreditation and the accreditation would allow the city's fire department to be one of forty in the world to not only have an ISO of one, which we currently have, but to also receive the, uh, World One accreditation, so that would be a pretty impressive feat. And what I really like and appreciate about it is when you look through it, you're gonna see data that allows us to, uh, fine-tune the way we respond and the resources that we put on the ground, uh, it's gonna allow us to be very efficient at that going forward. I talked to chief yesterday, uh, at length about it, uh, he's pretty excited to come in front of you all and present after you've had a chance to go through this, maybe in a month or a couple of weeks at least, and, uh, go through it, kind of explain it a little bit. It's very similar to, uh, some of the, uh, response efforts that you see being conducted by the police department, so as far as our emergency services here in the city, I would have to say we're pretty, pretty proactive in the effort that we're taking, I'm familiar with other metro agencies and I gotta tell you, this is, uh, this level of data is not always incorporated in, uh, in the operations that you would expect have them, uh, in large metros, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. It's pretty, pretty neat to be able to walk in on this effort and have two years' worth of data thrown on your desk, that's very meaningful, so it's, I don't think it'll put you to sleep when you read it either, it's pretty interesting.
It's a lot.
It is, it really is, uh, also, as you guys know, we've had some, uh, opportunity and some, uh, uh, response efforts in our building department that have allowed me as your manager to, uh, fine-tune some of the ways we operate, reorganize the group a little bit, very appreciative of our current inspectors for, uh, continuing to do the work they're doing, they're doing a great job, and the department is being reshaped at the moment and I think we're gonna have something, uh, that we can all be proud of by the time we're done reorganizing that group. It, it does, uh, put the question on the table, and what I'll tell you is that right now, we're doing what I would call responsive code enforcement work. And that is to say, when we get a complaint, it's called in, we respond to it, we'll issue a notice, if it's actionable, of course. Uh, but as far as going out and doing proactive patrols in neighborhoods and areas that we know are problematic, uh, that's not, that's not happening right now, and we are receiving a little bit of pushback on that from, uh, area property owners that would like to see us maintain a proactive patrol basis and that would be for the purpose of preserving property values and quality of life, of course. We are not yet fully staffed to be proactive, but that's not a problem, that is part of our financial outlay that we have, those positions were uh, funded and programmed for, so that's something that's not going to require a financial discussion, but it's more of a discussion of philosophy. I, I think, I think we probably owe it to the community to be doing proactive patrols, but I think what I owe to the group and the community as well is that it be done in a way that is, uh, probably meeting the appetite and a prioritization scale that falls in line, what I don't wanna see is, uh, proactive patrol that results in aggressive court action on one property and then five houses down within plain view of sight, another property that might be worse or equally as bad that has never received a notice. So that is a, uh, that is a full-time commitment, uh, does require a little bit of, uh, work as you go, uh, but with your all's blessing to proceed with proactive patrol, that's the direction I would like to go and I would like to, uh, put that into action. Uh, certainly an opportunity to discuss it, doesn't require formal action, but it's something that is, uh, from time to time, uh, we'll load the podium with people that are upset that we're doing proactive patrol and this would look something quite different than the previous, uh, policy efforts. But we will, we will have people that are upset that we're doing proactive patrol on their properties and it's something that, uh, in your roles, you'll have to hear and respond to, so I, I think it's fair that we have a discussion about it, if there are concerns, that is.
Yeah, I had actually asked a question on that, one of the things I talked about at one of the meetings was a rubric, I know that everybody wants to do anything like that, but I thought, like, any non-emergency, if we had some set of standards, that way, the authority, we're not giving to the person that's actively patrolling, we're not giving them a free ticket to decide that this house, I'm gonna take it, but this one I don't, if we have a tier, like a three-tier level, like if this much damage is done, we're definitely gonna issue it, or a strategic plan on the worst of the worst houses in the city kind of thing, I just don't wanna give uh, another inspector just the free rein of I get to pick and choose who I'm going to be, like, if there was some kind of formal, um, standard for, does that make sense? Cause there's a lot of stuff in the property maintenance code, but there's a lot of properties that probably need to be addressed and others that could probably address later down the road, once we've raised the up the property standards of our worst of the worst, does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
In certain contexts, it does make sense, in others, it does not.
Okay.
Um, what I find to be the case is that normally, let's use Fourth Street, for example, or any street, frankly, uh, that would be a primary arterial or a corridor. If you've got a code violation that receives fifteen thousand cars per day in front of it, that's one that's gonna get noticed quicker, and depending upon where that might fall on a rubric, um, one that's embedded three streets in, off of an alley, might not get the same visual exposure and it wouldn't have the same negative impact to the community that one right on a major arterial would have.
Yeah.
And in all fairness to the employee that's going out and patrolling that, when they run the major corridors, they're probably gonna stumble across the one, uh, that's in the major trafficway sooner than the other, so we still rely on the complaints, of course, but, um, that is tricky to require under some sort of criteria that all of them are treated the same, when in fact, the traffic patterns of the city, uh, can look quite different
Yeah.
than something that might be hidden far back.
I just don't wanna free range, I guess, of authority to some, especially because some of these can end up in court, where it is like, what, a misdemeanor or a fine or going, I know it doesn't go there often, but I just think we need to really be mindful about how we treat our citizens too during this whole process.
So whoever we train for this, we actually want them to have free, free rein to do their job, and more than free rein, a, a, um, a, a protocol or an obligation to go out and do active patrol, otherwise frankly, the city's just not getting much bang for their buck if they're not going to be doing that. But it needs to be strategic, it, uh, needs to be prioritized and in keeping with s- the standards of the community, I, I feel. There will be court cases, of course, that, that go on, and you're gonna be dealing with some of the same properties that you've been dealing with, uh, in the past, that won't change cause normally you're talking about habitual issues, um, that frankly just don't go away very easily. But I think where management role plays in is explaining to you all when someone comes to the podium, timeout, there's a lot more information to this case that's being presented, let's wait two weeks so I can brief you all as to what's really happening here.
Yeah, I'm just-
And then we can have a, a clear view. But, you know, the city doesn't have to do proactive patrol, it's not something you're legally obligated to do.
Yeah.
I do think after a period of time, your residents are gonna want you to, uh, on a, on a scale.
I just think we should address the worst of the worst and not just-
Well, I agree, I agree, and that's-
I'd rather have a strategic plan and have somebody go out there and, you know, address, basically the houses that are on verge of being in the, going through the condemning process, right, like to be, there's houses that are before that, so they don't get to that process, is-
You know, a lot of those houses don't look bad to a neighbor or even to me, and I, I have structural knowledge, I used to do this work, I, for years.
Yeah.
There are homes that can be, uh, abandoned and as long as the grass is kept up and there's no peeling paint on the house, it can have a failed structure and stand there and we really wouldn't have proper cause to go in and kick the doors in and, and do
Yeah.
a full assessment on it. But the ones that really have nothing to do with safety might be cars on jacks, tall grass and weeds, uh, debris thrown out the front porch without even any care to put it in the dumpster. Uh, those are the ones that really don't have a lot to do with safety, but they have a lot to do with diminishing adjacent property values. And those are the ones that are generally the quickest noticed, uh, by a neighbor or an employee of the city,
Yeah.
uh, somebody driving by or a prospective investor that wants to move here from Newton or wherever. Gosh, is this the way the city's gonna be kept if it is?
Yeah, but also, I also know of investors that have refused to invest in our community, because as soon as they buy it, they're, you know, the hammer comes down and, and, uh,
So, that, I think-
They're told, like, you know, you have thirty days to get all of this done, you know? People are scared to do that, how, what are, what are we gonna do to change that culture around?
Well, and, you know, I think that's a great question and I think what Jeff is alluding to is it's not so much whether we're doing proactive or not, it's about hiring the right person with the right attitude to educate the public instead of condemn the public when they're having these issues.
We've lost out, oh, probably three million dollars worth of investment over the last couple of years because of this strenuiness that, you know, not being able to, um-
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, a customer service attitude and, and a willingness to work with, with property owners and, and help them along through the process, instead of maybe just dictate what the rules are, is, is really what's warranted and I, I think Jeff's seri-, um, certainly-
I think, yeah, I think he's doing a good job, I'm not, I'm just making sure that we, what we can do to ensure that that doesn't happen again in the future.
Well, training is ninety-nine percent of it and I think if the emphasis is on, as you say, hiring the right people with the right attitude and then providing the necessary training to ensure that they live up to your expectations, then we're in a better place, so.
It's, it's definitely a team effort, because if, if this employee, a future employee feels that they're not supported by my office or this elected body, uh, there'll certainly be a retraction of effort and then we failed. Um, and I do know that to this body's great credit, people are very comfortable coming to the podium, we want to continue that, we want that to flourish. Hopefully COVID's a thing of the past and we'll get through that, but, uh, people will have the freedom and the comfort level to come and address an issue to this body when they feel that something has been done that's not quite fair. But I think it's also important, when that happens, that we be very cautious and careful so that we have all the information before responding in a public setting.
Yep.
And there may be times where staff errors and there will be. But as far as building that, uh, that response mechanism and so that my office can push information back to you all so you can really see the story, uh, as to what's going on. I think that's gonna be beneficial to, uh, the position, the program, uh, to you all and to me and, and the people that are around these properties that are trying to sustain property values. Not everybody wants a rental house next to them and not everybody wants a house to convert to rental that lives next to one. And this is not an effort to curb, regulate, or, uh, minimize the efforts of rental property owners. There's a lot of rental property owners that are doing it right, uh, they know what's important and in some cases, they're the nicest house on the block. So, this really doesn't have a lot to do with that, although when we have this discussion, you're probably gonna have some fallout in the community where they want to push that discussion to where this is rental versus no rental, when in fact, this has nothing to do with whether something's owner occupied or rental, and far from it. This, if it's peeling paint, it's peeling paint, whether it's rental or owner occupied, in my opinion.
Yeah, trash is trash.
There'll be some people trying to push that narrative for us, uh, trying to engage us into a, a row, and I hope we can avoid that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for an update on that.
Thank you, that's all I have, ma'am, appreciate it.
Okay, anything else for the greater good?
Uh, briefly, uh, Karen brought the, the paperwork and gave it to me of, of, uh, the reimbursement. Uh, so, we are, we have been reimbursed thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is kind of that make us whole number. And then we applied for four hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars in, uh, in direct aid transfers, which is, um, things that are, that are COVID-related that are happening in the future. So, she's, she mentioned a million dollars and it's, it's, it's five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So, she just wanted to make sure that was, that was understood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Okay. Second, can you please call the roll?
Deadline?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Harris, Jake, and Lola?
Yes.